We will now go to the top of the page, page three. And we'll go back to July's council meeting. And on page three, AL S 20.1. Counselor Mehavik, you held the item down. Questions to staff? Counselor Hart.
Thank you, Speaker. Question to the executive director. On page four of your report, you have a list of animals that you get common complaints about, and I noticed chickens is the first on the list. Can you tell us what complaints you receive?
It's been so long, I forgot which button to use. Through you, Madam Speaker. Typically, the hen or chicken-related complaints have been around those that have gotten loose. Chickens on the run.
Another question for the executive director. In consultation with your animal services staff, can you tell me if you have any concerns about backyard hens attracting rodents or coyotes?
So through you, Madam Speaker. Certainly, we are dealing with an issue, the issue of coyotes and coywolves in the city, particularly in ravine areas. Any type of outdoor activity that would attract rodents or other wildlife is a concern.
Question, another question of you. I don't see the medical officer of health here, so I'll ask you the question. Have you received any information or done any research on the Centers of Disease Control in the U.S. relative to any outbreaks of salmonella connected to backyard hens?
Yes, through you, Madam Speaker. We are aware that the CDC has reported an outbreak of salmonella that they've tied back to the existence of backyard hens. As at the end of July, there's been 961 cases in 48 states, 215 hospitalizations, one death, all related to a variety of strains of salmonella.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell.
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker. So to Ms. Cook, how will you, let's say, how will you determine if the pilot is successful?
Through you, Madam Speaker. If a pilot were-
Would that be by, you know, number of eggs laid, or something like that, or production?
If a pilot were adopted by council, then we would determine a set of performance metrics that would allow us to report back on the outcomes of that pilot, would include access to a survey feedback from the public, and if council was interested in the volume of eggs produced by said backyard hens, we would be happy to include that metric.
So if we agree to the pilot, you're going to come up with some performance metrics? Is that what I heard?
Sorry, through you, Madam Speaker.
If we agree to the pilot, you're going to come up with performance metrics such as?
So through you, Madam Speaker, I would suggest any, making sure we've got captured any complaints around noise nuisance, and so basically the neighbor complaints. I think we'd have to talk to the medical officer of health to see if there was any ability for us to capture any illness-related complaints. You know, some of these things are very difficult. We get complaints in various parts of the city about rats every year due to construction, so we'd have to think through what other metrics we would be reporting out on to say whether the pilot was, and I don't know that it would be a success or not a success, but it would be about mitigating or managing if any nuisance arose from the pilot. So those metrics would be around community impacts.
So if we have chickens in the pilot, will people be required to pay a fee to have the chickens?
Through you, Madam Speaker. Certainly, Counselor Campbell, our report does not propose a pilot, but I understand a pilot is of interest, so we would take, we would take the guidance from council on what they would like to see happen. I would expect that there would be some level of registration required, so we would know where the backyard hens were happening, a certain restriction on the number of hens kept, and other performance standards, including proper safe housing for the hens. So I would see a pilot including a number of those things.
So if by chance this passes, we, there is a pilot, and then for whatever reasons it's deemed successful, and we have chickens in 44 wards, how much extra staff would you have to hire to monitor the extra, you know, the extra, the chickens? No, if it's, you didn't listen to the question. The question was, if we go to 44 wards after the pilot, how much extra staff would you have to hire?
So through you, Madam Speaker, that would be directly derived from the nature of the issues we were needing to address. If we had an issue, if there was a pilot, and if we had issues with chickens run amok around the city, and it was a draw on our animal services staff, then that would be part of the discussion. If the chickens, or the backyard hens, were causing community nuisance, and we had to deal and mitigate some of those things, that may have a different result. We may run a pilot and have none of those things, and it would require no staff. Unfortunately, at this point, I can't give you specifics.
But it could result in hiring an extra 10 or 15 staff perhaps, or 10 staff?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I would certainly hope that that would not be the case, but I, there, we just don't know what the impacts and community issues would be around.
So is it, could we look to other municipalities that have chickens and see what extra staff they had to implement and hire?
So through you, Madam Speaker. We have spoken to a number of other municipalities that do permit, either on a pilot or permanent basis, the existence of backyard hen flocks, and they have not reported any notable community issues or staff resource issues.
What would those municipalities have been?
There's New York City, Vancouver, Chicago, Brampton, Niagara Falls, Waterloo, Ottawa, Kingston. We don't have information that any, any of those cities have had an extraordinary volume of issues.
And so in those municipalities, how prevalent, you know, are backyard hens?
That's a great question. Through you, Madam Speaker. I don't know the volumes that they have. That certainly would be something that we would have to look at, vis-à-vis the size of our city and the volume of uptake.
All right, well, that answers my questions on the chicken issue.
Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just back me up. It's been a few months. So was this debated at the licensing committee, this issue of this pilot idea?
No. Through you, Madam Speaker. The report in front of you actually was dealing with prohibited animals and adding additional animals to our prohibited animals list in chapter 349, as well as setting out a criteria for prohibited animals and dealing with the educational mobile live animal programs. Chickens, backyard hens are on our list of prohibited animals.
They're on your list of prohibited animals?
Correct.
And I guess for a good reason, you researched that. Why are they on your list of prohibited animals?
Through you, Madam Speaker. There's a lot of animals on this list, and a lot of it deals with, it's historical for this list. We did not just create it and just add chickens or backyard hens, and they do exist on many, many, if not all, other municipalities that have prohibited animals lists. And part of the, part of the criteria around looking at prohibited animals is impact to neighbors, community, safety, health and safety, ability to care for the animals, which is important as well from an animal welfare standpoint, that they have access to the appropriate veterinarian services. So for a variety of those things, we've actually outlined some criteria that we apply to the prohibited animal list in this report.
So it wasn't discussed at municipal, at the licensing committee? There was no deputations? There was no public hearing or public input on this pilot concept?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I don't recall a specific discussion about a backyard hen pilot. I will say, through the course of the consultations on this item, there were discussions brought forward from the community about backyard hens.
So there's been a public meeting? There has been an official city public meeting on this?
Not specifically on a pilot project or program to allow backyard hens, no. There was public consultation on the animals' bylaws specifically related to the prohibited animals, and we did have a fair bit of feedback, about over, almost 2,400 respondents on a survey, including two public consultations. The issue of backyard hens was discussed through those consultations. writ large as part of-
As part of the pitch.
Yes, but as a pilot project specifically, no, ma'am.
Okay, that's, that's very clear. Thank you. And, and my understanding is, I learned this from another councillor, the Humane Society doesn't support backyard hens. Is that, do you know if that's true?
I'm sorry, Counselor Robinson?
My understanding from another councillor is that the Humane Society does not support backyard hens. Do you know if that's accurate?
Did they?
No? Okay. Do you know if, my understanding, again, I don't know a lot about these matters, but hens lay eggs for only two to five years, and then there's a tendency for the owners to want to get rid of the hens, and so they tend to, I guess they can't slaughter them in their backyard, which I'm happy to hear, but they end up sending them to shelters like the Humane Society, so they're overloaded with unwanted chickens. Is that true, or have you ever?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I'm not aware of the Humane Society's direct engagement on the backyard hen issue, nor an overrun. I know when we have ended up with backyard hens, or chickens in our care, we've made arrangements with farmers and others outside of the city to take them.
Okay.
And unfortunately, I'm not completely educated on the duration of the egg-laying time for backyard hens or their ultimate disposition afterwards.
Okay, and are roosters allowed? Are roosters part of this?
No. Through you, ma'am Speaker. That's a different type of, type of bird, and we would, I don't think, through you, ma'am Speaker, I don't want to answer about the reproductive business of chickens. But what we, in the context of a pilot, what we would recommend is that roosters are not permitted, naturally because of the noise from whatever source.
Have you heard anything about accidental rooster acquisition, where at a very young age, it's difficult to determine? Because again, I've heard this via other parties, that it's problematic, and so people buy roosters unknowingly. Not aware of that. Okay, by the look on your face, that's my impression.
True.
Okay.
Yeah, no, you got me on that one.
Again, it's just what I'm hearing, so I'm just wanting to cut it through you. And then lastly, I guess similar to Counselor Campbell, I have trouble in my ward getting MLS officers out to do kind of run-of-the-mill things, and no criticism at all. I think there's a bit of a resource challenge, but having said that, there's a lot of things that frustrate my neighborhoods that aren't getting addressed as quickly as I would like to see them getting addressed. It takes a few emails. So how would this, would this put additional pressure on, and maybe it's not a fair question, additional pressure on your, your resource challenges?
So through you, Madam Speaker. I mean, we're all taxed with everybody wanting or needing more, and us managing with the resources that we have, and I understand, that's not a criticism. I feel the frustration, and I know we try diligently to meet timelines, and it's, it's a challenge at certain times.
Well, thank you, Counselor Robinson. You're way over time.
Oh, that was my fault. So as far as any impact on-
I was just enjoying the roosters, turkeys, whatever.
As far as resources, I don't know.
Counselor Kerjanis.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I was wondering if Colonel Sanders has been, through you to staff, if Colonel Sanders has been consulted?
Through you, Madam Speaker. He was certainly welcome to answer our public surveys, sir, if he was so inclined.
Now, I understand that we're not allowing the male species of, of the animal to be in the city. I was wondering if you can elaborate a little bit on that, please?
So through you, Madam Speaker. As I referenced earlier, currently, our report is dealing with amendments to chapter 349 and prohibited animals. The discussion that commenced in July was around the possibility of a pilot related to backyard hens. We would, if that pilot is approved, we would look at setting out performance standards and rules governing that, and yes, one of those considerations-
Hold on, hold on, hold on, please. I'm going to put your time on hold. There's an awful lot of noise, members of council? Please, no clucking.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
So through you, Madam Speaker. We have not been directed to create a pilot. We haven't laid out all of the rules. This was focused on, the discussion has been around, if we were to permit, council was to permit a pilot for backyard hens, our position would be that that would be excluding anything other than the backyard hens, which would include the exclusion of roosters.
But through, through the speaker to staff, don't you think that it is also appropriate that, I mean, you know, if you want to keep the family together and all that stuff, that you also allow the, the male species of the animals to be there?
Through you, Madam Speaker. Certainly, sir, we'd be welcome to have a discussion about the appropriate participants in any backyard hen program, noting though that we would recommend a limit on the number of hens that were permitted to be kept, and the, we would have to study the impacts of whether a rooster in the hen house would be appropriate or not.
Well, I mean, a rooster in the hen house is, I was told that when I was small and I was growing up, that that would be appropriate. I mean, you cannot have a house without a male species. I mean, you can, but I mean-
(inaudible) Through-
Is that again?
So through you, Madam Speaker. It's not so much that we would seek to be discriminatory, it would simply be the issue of managing noise and the impact on neighbors should a rooster be on the property, and the early morning wake-up calls that the rest of the neighborhood may not wish to have.
So are you trying to tell us and alluding to that the chickens make less noise than the rooster does, or they make equal noises, through, through the speaker to staff? I'd like an explanation.
Through, through you, Madam Speaker. I, you know, we can, if we're directed to do the pilot, we can certainly go away and determine the noise levels of the various types of birds that may be permitted. As it stands right now, the question was around, well, has not yet been floored, but the discussion has been around the allowing of a pilot for backyard hens. We have not been asked to contemplate, or you can direct an exemption to allow roosters. If we were to run a pilot with backyard hens, our intention would be to not include roosters, irrespective of breaking up the family, as it were.
So you're not discriminating against the male, the male of the species?
Through you, Madam Speaker. No, I love them all equally.
Is that my time's up, Madam Speaker, or we have five minutes? My time's up?
You still have a minute and a half.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, appreciate that. Now, I was wondering, through the speaker to staff, I was wondering if you can contemplate what would Colonel Sanders say about the male part of the species, if they should be there or not? I mean, I'm just wondering, have you had any?
Well, through you, Madam Speaker. I'm sure some of them are tender and sweet, and others are tough and crusty. I'm not sure exactly which side one would fall on versus the other, sir.
But through, through the, through the speaker, and I know this comes from my good friend, Counsel Holiday, and he wants me to ask this question. I'm just wondering, if we don't have a rooster, how can we have eggs? And I'm not sure if, what came first, the chicken or the egg? So we do need roosters, I mean, in the pilot project. Am I incorrect in that?
No. So through you, Madam Speaker. My understanding, and there are people who are far more educated on the keeping of backyard flocks, that a rooster is not necessarily required for the promulgation of said eggs.
Said species. I was wondering, would you be, would you be, would you be agreeable that maybe this needs to be studied farther by the Licensing and Standards Committee? Maybe this should be deferred back for us to take a look at if we should be allowing roosters on the, on the premises?
So through you, Madam Speaker. Certainly, as I mentioned, this report did not contemplate, nor did it recommend, a pilot regarding backyard hens. We will be happy to accept the direction of council, should you feel that a more deliberate discussion and research is done in respect to the, the performance standards around a pilot versus otherwise.
Okay, your, your time is up now. Thank you. Okay. Counselor Holiday, you're very anxious to ask questions.
Just, just standing to stretch.
You've been standing for five minutes.
In this chair for a while, but thank you, Speaker. Through you to the executive director. We prohibit a bunch of animals in the city, but we also permit a number of animals. What are some of the more common animals that we have, and how would they be similar? Cats, dogs, would that be fair to say?
Okay, hold on. Counselor Mehavik, Counselor Kerjanis, stop. Everyone was quiet when you spoke, Counselor Kerjanis.
I do have a point in my questions.
Okay, you can start all over. Okay.
Thank you, Speaker. I wonder if the executive director can comment on some of the animals that we do permit and what the similarities are.
Through you, Madam Speaker. Certainly, regular domestic animals, as you mentioned, dogs, cats, bunny rabbits, guinea pigs, hamsters. Pigeons are allowed to be kept in the city, which is a, you know, more of a direct relation to, to chickens.
Is it fair to say the majority are, I think, everything that I'm hearing are pretty much pets? You could call them a pet. Would they, do they live indoors?
Through you, Madam Speaker. Certainly, we encourage people to keep their cats indoors, and we have requirements in our animals' bylaw regarding proper enclosures and housing for dogs if they are left outdoors. So we do require proper humane treatment.
But for the most part, it's pets that we're talking about in an urban setting, and for the most part, they are things that live indoors with families, with humans, and they're treated as pets. Does anyone eat their pet? I mean, you know, as a matter of habit or course or normalcy here? I don't think so.
Through you, Madam Speaker. I'm sure that was rhetorical, and I would certainly hope not, and yes, I would say the bulk, the majority of pets that are kept in the city are kept indoors.
What I'm getting at is, would it be fair to say that we're talking about livestock in this instance? I mean, these are animals that are, that are brought here for the purpose of food production. I don't think they're pets. I think we're talking about livestock.
So through you, Madam Speaker. Certainly, when we look at our list of prohibited animals, and I'm happy to give you a rundown of what many of those are, do fall into the livestock and exotic or wild animals, non-indigenous.
Would it be fair to say that we're heading down a path with this, this, here, what I hear about this proposal to, to introduce backyard hens? We are talking about introducing livestock, or, I don't know, urban farming, or something along that lines. What's to say I don't want to have a goat? And, you know, for the reasons of that, you know, that we've talked about, they're pretty quiet, they have a little patch of grass. You know, where do we stop? Can I have a cow? I like milk. I mean, it's rhetorical, obviously, but, but is there any controls? Where do we draw the line?
So through you, Madam Speaker. The line gets drawn here, sir. City council, I didn't mean that facetiously. City council has the authority to dictate what is permitted and/or prohibited to be kept in the city of Toronto.
Are you aware of any livestock, you know, other than maybe in a factory for a limited amount of time? Is there anyone that raises livestock here in a household setting?
Through you, Madam Speaker. We generally know, but I will say there, we have had occasions where little pot-bellied pigs have been dropped off at animal services. So there are some people who are making some interesting choices as far as pets go. It's not for me to judge.
Right.
But we have had some cases where, where little pigs have been dropped off.
So we're talking about livestock, and so that's the turning point of the conversation, and would it be fair to say that we are treading on new ground here? We're not talking about pets and prohibited animals. We're actually talking about a different category of animal for a different purpose, which is to create food, I think. This is different.
So through you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, we're not having a, from my understanding of the nature of this discussion, it is around a move and a consideration of urban farming, farming in urban environments. I know that dialogue is happening in various places around, around North America at least. This is the first one of these conversations that I've had, so.
Fair enough. Would it be fair to say that a dozen eggs is two or three bucks? You know, 30 cents an egg?
Yeah, true.
So with that in mind, could you tell us a little bit about what you know about the cost to properly raise and take care of four hens in the backyard?
Through you, Madam Speaker. On this point, I would be guessing. I think there may be some colleagues that you have there more informed on that.
Would it be fair to say that it is far, far in excess, the cost of going into a store to purchase a dozen eggs that might probably be a day or two old if they were shipped quickly over here? And with three or four hens, you can only produce three or four eggs a day, so it would take three or four days to acquire those eggs. Would it be fair to say that people are not doing this on an economic basis, or this notion of, you know, it's, it's easily accessible food, that in fact, it's a very expensive way to get eggs, that it's far cheaper just to go out and buy an egg?
So through you, Madam Speaker. You know, I, I don't think I'd be properly placed to break it down on a unit cost. I would say that should a pilot be permitted, there are expectations of the city, or would be expectations of the city, that the animals are properly housed, properly fed, properly maintained, and whatever those costs are, those costs are, but on a per-unit basis, I guess that's, the value is in the eye of the beholder.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor DeChiano.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Let's just try and get through some of this fear-mongering. The, to Ms. Cook, certainly you mentioned that there are several municipalities in Ontario that have been allowing backyard chickens, Niagara Falls being one of those, for over 20 years?
Through you, Madam Speaker. We are aware of a number of jurisdictions. Yes, sir.
And how many people have died of salmonella?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I wouldn't have that number, but I'm gathering probably none.
How many people have been violently sick? How many calls of chickens have we had in the last 20 years in Ontario from backyard chickens?
So through you, Madam Speaker. That's, that's information that I would not have had on hand.
Nothing you brought up on Google or anything that we can see that was a massive, you know, public health issue created by backyard chickens?
So through you, Madam Speaker. In that respect, we did look at the public health, and we did talk to the chief medical officer of health about the public health concerns around backyard hens. That's where we landed on the information that came out of the Center for Disease Control out of the United States regarding the salmonella outbreak tied back to backyard hen flocks. Other than that, we believe there have been some cases over time, but nothing, nothing significant. I will also note out of fairness that in those same, same materials, it was discussed that proper hygiene and proper hand washing are the things that need to be done in order to avoid contracting salmonella from any source, including backyard hens.
Right. Hand, foot, and mouth disease, it's, you know, a young child can walk in one of our parks today and easily contract hand, foot, and mouth disease just from, you know, dog feces or anything like that. That's something that can happen very common here in Toronto. We don't ban dogs for that reason. We manage the problem in terms of the, the health outcomes.
So through you, Madam Speaker, again, not treading into the shoes of the chief medical officer of health, but I do know, and from my conversations with her, the issues, those issues that arise are typically around the lack of appropriate hygiene or sufficient hygiene. Hand washing, of course, being the primary protector from those types of diseases.
Right. And are you aware that in Niagara Falls last year, there was 500 dog complaints with respect to noise, and only 10 for chickens? That is an, that is a municipality that's had chickens allowed for 20 years. Are you aware of that statistic? 500 complaints for dogs and 10 for chickens in terms of noise?
Through you, Madam Speaker. No, I'm not aware of their statistics, though I would say that would fall in line with the statistics that we have. We, we do receive many more complaints about dogs due to the volume of dogs relative to the complaints we've had about chickens. Chicken-related complaints have been about 100 a year.
Right. And I know that there's no one here from public health. If you can't answer this, I completely understand, but given that chickens eat bugs and critters at a high rate, and that mosquitoes carry West Nile, would we be able to correlate that if chickens were allowed, you'd have less mosquitoes, so the risk for West Nile in the city would go down?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I, I, well, to whether the chickens, we'd have enough chickens to eat enough mosquitoes to, to take away the issue of West Nile and/or the other conditions that breed mosquitoes, and the, you know, the level of rain we've had this year.
Right.
I think it would be a tough, tough corollary to draw, but it's a good effort.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor DeSette.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm going to start on with the hens, and then we'll go on to the other reason we actually did this report. Are residents allowed to keep bees in the city?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I'm not aware of any bylaw governing the prohibition of bees, apiaries. Yeah. Provincially. They're provincially permitted. I have animal services.
So bees are allowed to be kept in the city, and am I correct that that bylaw specifies how far the apiary has to be away from a property line? So therefore, the size of the property?
Through you, Madam Speaker. We believe that's governed provincially, and we do believe there are those performance standards.
And also, my understanding is that when you have a hive, you have to register it with the province? See, I've done my beekeeping course.
You are so good.
So you would be looking, with the chickens, you would be looking at something maybe along that line, possibly the size of the property, how far from the property line the coops could be kept? Would that sort of be where you're coming from?
Yeah, through you, Madam Speaker. Certainly, when I, when I mention performance standards, yes, it's about area of the property. We also want to make sure we stay away from accessory structure issues and the need for my good friend here from Toronto Building, as well as other standards around maintenance and mitigating community or neighbor impacts.
Now, we heard some concerns about when the hen has finished laying eggs, what people will do with them. Are you aware that there's a company called Rent the Chicken?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I have become aware of that company.
And are you aware, for roughly $600, you can rent a coop, four hens, no roosters, Four hens, no roosters? And they will deliver it to you? And they provide you with the food? They set it up for you? And at the end of the season, they take them away? Are you aware of this?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I believe a very wise councillor actually made me aware of that.
So also, on their website, it indicates that if you have four chickens, this is an answer to Counselor Holliday's question, you will get between eight and 14 eggs per week from four chickens. That's pretty good. Would you not, would you agree?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I like my eggs, clearly. That sounds like a good number.
And are you aware that these eggs, because you know what your chicken is eating, they can eat some of your food scraps from your kitchen, which actually reduces what goes into your green bin, which reduces what we as a city have to pick up? They have a third less cholesterol? They are a quarter less saturated fats? And two times more amigo, three fatty acids than the eggs bought in a store? Isn't that, doesn't that sound healthy? Amigo, sorry, amigo. Doesn't that sound healthy?
That sounds extremely healthy.
To Counselor Dusset. Counselor Burnside has allowed us how Speaker Nunziata could go next. Madam Speaker.
Okay, thank you. For a councillor that represented the stockyards, where I have a lot of pigs and everything there, chickens and running on people's front lawns, I've dealt with it. But just a question. First of all, the report that we have on licensing, there was, at licensing, there was no motion. We did not make a motion on a pilot for chicken, backyard chickens, anything, correct?
Through you, Madam Speaker. That is correct.
Correct. So now, there is, I understand there's a movement to move a motion to have a pilot. But we're voting on a pilot when you have not submitted in a report, correct?
That's correct.
No report. And even a pilot in the specific wards that are being proposed, there has been no public consultation?
That is correct.
So, do you not, do you not think that if we're going to even try a pilot in four wards, that there should be some sort of consultation on what the criteria will be and who would be eligible? I mean, we go and get petitions and do polls and surveys for permit parking, front yard parking, everything else, and we're going to allow chickens in backyards without consultation?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I do agree. I think public consultation and engagement is important in all the work we do.
And even if there, it's, the pilot is only in four specific wards, the residents of that ward should have input. And if somebody applies, I assume that they would be applying, correct? Or it's not, everybody's just going to have chickens in their backyard with no criteria, nothing, just throw chickens in the backyard?
No. So through you, Madam Speaker. Certainly if I was directed to develop a pilot regarding backyard hens, we would make sure that we had appropriate rules and processes in place to ensure that it was managed and that we could report back out on it.
So the rules would be and should be is that if somebody is applying for a specific use or applying for a permit, that residents in the area on the street would have input on it, just like they do everything else that we ask residents, correct?
Through you, Madam Speaker. Certainly, Madam Speaker, that would be something that we would have to discuss in the context of forming what a pilot would look like, how it would be operated, the metrics we would report back on, the potential resource implications, if any. Ideally, yeah, we need time to do all of that work.
So it's really premature to even move a motion to have a pilot without, it's sending it back to licensing and asking you, when you get some time, to bring forward a report? Because you have so many reports that you have deadlines on that are priority, that you would report back to licensing? And at that point, have deputations?
Through you, Madam Speaker. Certainly, and thank you for acknowledging, Madam Speaker, that we have a large volume of work that council is waiting for us to deliver on, and we are not going to hit all of those deadlines. I can attest to that right now. So certainly, it's a body of work that we want to make sure we did thoroughly and properly with the appropriate consultation. Having it properly vetted through committee and allowing deputation would be the better way to do it, and perhaps, given the time of year, it may be the more prudent course to take.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nunziata. Madam Speaker. Counselor Burnside, thank you for waiting.
It's my pleasure, Deputy Speaker. Through you to, through you to staff. Just wanted to follow up more on Counselor Holliday's line of questioning, if you will, regarding the prohibited animals. So chickens are currently a prohibited animal, yes?
Yes, through you, Madam Speaker, they are.
Okay. And what was the purpose for putting chickens on that list?
Through you, Madam Speaker. The prohibited animals list goes back decades, and many of the animals on the list are those, as referenced previously, those who will be considered livestock, those that are exotic or non-indigenous to Ontario. And it includes goats, sheeps, pigs, cattle, moths, tigers, leopards, kangaroos, skunks, weasels, horses, donkeys. So variety of animals.
So is it primarily, it's a livestock issue?
It's a livestock, it's, in the context of backyard hens, I would capture them in that livestock bucket, if you will, though it's under a different type of Latin.
But not because they're in, they could potentially be in certain-sized cages? Because I'm wondering why, you know, these traveling road shows, if you will, couldn't bring chickens in or for educational purposes? They're not allowed to bring them into schools, right? So I'm trying to understand how the two policies would work together.
Yeah. So through you, Madam Speaker. So the prohibited animal list is a list of animals that are absolutely not permitted to be in the city unless they are exempted. And in the bylaw, there's a list of exemptions. Riverdale Zoo, Hyde Park Zoo, Toronto Zoo, the Toronto Wildlife Centre. And as well, there was an exemption in there for allowing people to bring in prohibited animals for no more than three days for educational purposes. That exemption is the one that we are recommending be eliminated, so prohibited animals can no longer be brought around into schools or anywhere, for that matter.
And though, and notwithstanding what's going on with this particular issue, chickens would then be totally, would be totally prohibited?
So chickens, backyard hens are totally prohibited right now unless it's under an exemption?
So they wouldn't have an exemption, is what I'm trying to get at?
Correct.
Correct.
Sorry. Who wouldn't have the exemption?
The chickens, like for educational purposes?
Right. So any prohibited animal for educational purposes with the adoption of this report, actually, the adoption of the last report, is no longer permitted in the city? No prohibited animals for educational purposes? That's ended.
So that, so chickens would be more than a livestock issue, then?
So the discussion that's been happening here around the backyard hens as a pilot, we would have to carve, City Council would have to carve out an exemption for those people who wanted to participate in an approved, in an approved pilot in order for them to possess those animals.
But we wouldn't have an exemption if, for those, to use those, even those same chickens for educational purposes?
Correct.
Does that make sense to you?
Through you, Madam Speaker.
It's okay, it's okay. You don't have to.
Does it make sense to you, does it? Thank you, Counselor Burnside. Counselor Holland.
Thank you, Deputy Speaker, through you. And to, so I'll just first ask legal a few questions about the prohibited animals. And I understand this goes under Guinea fowl, I believe, and so they are classified as prohibited, correct?
That's correct, and it's galliforms, to be precise.
It is.
Galliforms is the scientific or Latin name.
Okay, thank you. And so if there were a pilot and it were to move forward, what is the process in terms of legal or the exemption process in order to do that?
As the bylaw currently prohibits hens or chickens in the city of Toronto, we would have to amend the bylaw to create an exception or exemption to that prohibition. I understand that it's being discussed as a temporary pilot project, so we would then have to create a mechanism to repeal those exemptions effective the date set by council.
Okay. And then it would be repealed and then put back and then?
That's correct. So if a date is set to end the pilot, then that would be the date that the exemptions would fall out of the bylaw and the prohibitions would come back in force for the specified wards.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then through to Ms. Cook. So, I mean, I was on budget for many, many years, and MLS was always an area where I would say most councillors always wanted to see more staff. And because I would say the number-one complaints I get in Ward 35 are MLS-related, I can't imagine...
Counselor Holland, hold on, I can't even hear you. Members of council, please. Counselor Fletcher? Counselor Layton?
Oh, Mike.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I can't imagine that you're not overrun. I know our MLS staff are doing amazing work in Scarborough and for Ward 35, but it's tough. We have a lot of calls. It takes a while for people to get out, not because they are slow, it's because actually they're just overrun. And I can't imagine adding this on to it. Would you not feel that we would have to absolutely put more resources, more staffing into though? Because governments don't like to take risk. They always run forward.
So through you, Madam Speaker. Certainly, it would tie up our time to create the pilot, to monitor the pilot, and then the outcomes of any enforcement or particularly on the Animal Services side of the House, responses to deal with any animal issues. I was asked previously, I don't know what that number would be. I think, and I appreciate your recognition, that we are, we're doing the best we can with what we have, and everything else we add on just draws on the same people doing more things, and we really need to work on prioritizing where we need to spend our time. But I can't give an answer as to what that number would be or what that impact would be out of fairness, though there would be an impact in just starting to set it up and monitoring.
Okay. And...
Oh, the space.
And you...
Sorry, through you, Madam Speaker. Well, Carlton just reminded me as well, we need to make provision for where to house, temporarily house any animals that came into our care. We've kind of been doing it ad hoc right now, so...
I know.
Yeah, there are some of those additional ancillary costs.
Right. And that would lead into my next question. So we know that the production laying period of hens is two years, but they live for 10. So what happens to the hens after their production laying period? I mean, because a lot of people may have small children and they don't want to take them in to be slaughtered, and so what generally happens with these hens after the two-year mark?
So through you, Madam Speaker. I mean, that's going to come down to the people who own the hens from a city. From a city perspective, my concern would be if people started returning them in to us.
Right.
Which does happen with owner surrender, or as we saw a couple of years ago in Hyde Park where it came and it was let loose in the pond. I mean, that would be my concern of what that disposition of those animals would be.
And we're going to be overrun at MLS, and then, so I'll go into my next question in terms of, is there a lot of, we know, I know that the average cost of running, I think this is the problem, what happens with a lot of people, they get excited about it. I mean, I buy small flock eggs. I don't eat a lot. I buy six at a time. Yep, they're expensive, but you get your small flock, which is local. If people want that, they should look in that direction. I've heard, and we verified on a couple of places where they've had backyard farming...
Your last question.
I am wrapping up my question. Is, the cost is actually around $40 a dozen, and so when people get into it, they're all excited, but then they realize the cost, and then the fact is, is what happens to all these chickens?
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Through you, Madam Speaker. And certainly Counselor Holliday was asking similar questions, and I'm sorry, I was not fully up to speed on unit cost for backyard-raised eggs and hens. But as I said earlier, you know, our expectation and our standards around any pilot would have to ensure that the appropriate animal welfare and neighbor nuisance issues were addressed, and that would have a cost.
Thank you. Counselor Perutza, you're next.
Just a couple of questions, because I've been sitting here diligently listening to folks describing this operation. You know, these two little white chickens, right? You sit there and out comes this little white egg, and then you pet it and it goes back to sleep. And it's like the cleanest, sweetest, tastiest operation you could ever, you could ever imagine. So you talked a little earlier about salmonella, rodents, coyotes, you know, chickens running wild, but I just want to, I just want to turn your mind to, how, how does one keep a couple of chickens in their backyard?
Through you, Madam Speaker. They would be required to build a reasonably sized, appropriately sized coop and make sure that the hens were properly housed and protected.
Okay, so now they have to build something that's completely enclosed, because it's not like you can train a chicken, right? You can't say to the chicken, "No, you can't fly out and fly into the neighbor's yard. No, you can't go poop on his veranda. You got to stay in the little coop here," right?
I don't think the executive director is an expert on chickens.
I'm...
Speaker, I'm just trying to understand.
I know.
You may understand this.
No, I don't understand.
Could you stop my time? Because you've interrupted me, right?
Pardon?
Could you stop my time or give me my time back?
Go ahead, 20 seconds, Counselor Perutza.
So...
But please ask a question.
I'm trying to understand how one would keep chickens in their backyard. So you build a coop. So appropriately sized, for four chickens, for four hens, how big would the coop need to be?
You have to be able to spread, yeah. Through you, Madam Speaker. That would be some of the requirements...
Let's just say it's a fair size.
I'd say about four wingspan.
Okay. Now, if you don't want to be cruel, if you don't want to be cruel to your chickens, you would, in our climate, given that we have like a summer climate and then we got a winter climate, you would want them in the summertime to have some mobility outdoors, some fresh air, I'm assuming, you know, some ability to move around. And then in the wintertime, when it's really cold, you would want an indoor facility of some kind for them that it's got some heat in it. You don't want your chickens to freeze, or you don't want to find your white, little white egg in the morning all frozen up like an ice cube, right?
Through you, Madam Speaker. When we, if we're directed to create a pilot, certainly some of those performance standards or requirements would be around the animal welfare, the appropriate housing, appropriate feeding, and we would look to experts in the field to give us guidance on what that needs to look like.
Now, how many times do you have to feed a chicken a day?
Through you, Madam Speaker. I think they graze all day, but I am not the chicken-feeding expert.
Okay. And chickens need to drink?
I would suspect they would.
And then they need to be cleaned at some point, and you'd have to maintain them. So it would be safe to say that you couldn't pick up and go down for two weeks to Jamaica, right? To your, like, some swanky club there and leave your chickens all alone by themselves, correct?
Through you, Madam Speaker. We would require in any pilot, the appropriate measures be taken to ensure animal welfare. So I would trust that if anyone has gotten, gone to the trouble to build the coop and get the hens, that they would take the appropriate steps to ensure that they were well-maintained and cared for, and we would require that in the pilot.
Right. And requiring it means you'd expect how often, each and every, each and every one?
Through you, Madam Speaker.
Like, how would you, how would you determine, you know, if someone was like being cruel to chickens and then you'd have to go back every once in a while and go take a look?
So through you, Madam Speaker.
Now, Counselor Perutza, please, you're not allowing the staff to answer any of the questions. You're just rambling on. Like, let the staff answer.
Through you, Madam Speaker. We would deal with any animal mistreatment, cruelty to chicken issues, complaints, as we do with other animal-related issues, by complaint basis primarily. If something comes to our attention, then we would investigate appropriately.
And let's take a look at that for a second. How quickly do you get out to a particular standards complaint today?
So through you, Madam Speaker. Depending on the nature of the complaint, sir, will dictate the speed that we can respond. I can share that our Animal Services crew, though small, are mighty, and when it comes to issues of animal welfare, they respond relatively quickly. On the other side, with property standards, due to the volumes, et cetera, we're much longer in responding. So our response times really vary by the priority... the priority given to the nature of the complaint or the issue.
So, so in terms of time, what, what could those time lags be?
So through you, Madam Speaker-
That's your last question?
Our, our Animal Services mobile teams, if it's an issue of animal distress or animal cruelty, can respond relatively quickly. That's one of the few groups I've got that are actually operating about 22 hours a day, but there's only a few of them covering the city. They have responded within an hour, two hours, to some cases where it's been an animal cruelty, animal injured, or animal in distress. In other cases where it's not that nature, then it does take longer, 24 hours, 48 hours. It really varies.
Thank you. Recession to 6:30. Okay, so the motions are going to be circulated. When we go through members' motions, any of the motions that members of council want to hold down, they can hold those motions down at the appropriate time. We'll now go back to the item that we were debating. We can put the, the speaker's list up, and I believe we still have two more questioners. Counselor Mehavik, you're next.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'll try to be quick here. To the Director, General Manager of MLS, are you aware of the public health report from Vancouver, just focusing on the public health issue that was done a few years ago that reviewed best practices and literature on, on backyard hens?
Through you, Madam Speaker, not the Vancouver one specifically, though I do know there are guidance documents around backyard hens from a variety of sources.
The conclusion is, just if you could articulate again, that from a public health perspective, all other things being equal, and they never are, of course, because there are good dog owners, there are bad dog owners, there are good cat owners, there are bad cat owners, all are the things being, all things being equalized, that the possession of backyard hens is no more dangerous to human health than any other, other of those critters?
Through you, Madam Speaker, certainly the guidance, even in respect to the CDC information I provided previously, the guidance from the veterinarian for the CDC did note that this does not preclude people from backyard hens, but that the proper precautions, health precautions, need to be taken in all circumstances.
Just like with dogs, just like with cats.
With every other type of animal, reptiles as well carry salmonella.
Thank you. Does the bylaw allow for pigeons, the current bylaw?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes, they do.
Does the bylaw allow for rabbits?
Yes, it does.
Does it allow for guinea pigs?
They are not prohibited, so they are permitted.
So there's a variety of animals that we already have that are, are allowed in, under the current bylaw. In terms of who else is doing it, you are aware that there are many cities, I think you listed some of them, in, in Canada that allow backyard hens. In the United States, would it be fair to say the New York, Portland, I'm just thinking, allow Detroit, Chicago, Los Angeles, Houston, Miami, Dallas, like, there's virtually top 20 cities in the United States, well over a few million people, all of them allow hens?
So through you, Madam Speaker, I can't speak to all of them, Counselor Mehavik. I do know New York City and Chicago, Las Vegas, and, and Los Angeles do permit them.
Right. Okay, thank you. In Europe, is it not the case that most, in fact, I, could be all, of major metropolitan areas also allow backyard hens?
Through you, Madam Speaker, I don't have a jurisdictional scan of Europe in its entirety, though I do have a staff member that just returned from Amsterdam and indicated that there are a lot of backyard hens there.
Correct. And in terms of the motion, I'm moving a motion, I think your office had input into that motion, is I not correct?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes. At the last council meeting, we assisted with a motion in respect to a pilot.
And then also you had input into, in fact, you had major input into the motion that is coming from the Chair of the Committee, I think it's going to be moved by Counselor Diciano. Is that fair to say?
Through you, Madam Speaker, my memory is fading on that one particularly. If you say we were involved, then I'll believe we were involved.
Yes. Those, those two motions basically allow you to do all the things that you need to do to make sure that this issue is contextualized appropriately, and that we as a city have enough control over this process to make sure that it doesn't frankly spin out of control. Not that it will, but if it did, we would have those tools. Would that be fair to say?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes, sir. I do recall there were additional pieces to the motion that we were asked to, to prepare with your, to assist you, that did give us the parameters that we could set out terms and conditions of participation-
Yes.
-should it be adopted to go ahead.
Thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Counselor Shiner?
Well, thank you, Madam Speaker. So again, of Ms. Cook, Ms. Cook, we have bylaws that permit pigeons?
Through you, Madam Speaker, yes, we do.
Do we have complaints, in particular from an ex-councillor who's been trying to help residents who live next to pigeons?
Through you, Madam Speaker, there is an item outstanding from Licensing and Standards Committee regarding a particular address related to pigeons, yes.
So it's an ongoing problem in some areas with the noise from pigeons?
Through you, Madam Speaker, that's a, one specific incident or one specific issue that I probably ought not to be discussing.
So, top cities that allow hen houses. So Las Vegas allows hen houses?
Through you, Madam Speaker, they do permit for backyard hens to be kept.
Amsterdam permits hen houses?
Through, through you, Madam Speaker, yes, they do permit backyard hens to be kept.
And now we're being asked in Toronto to permit hen house?
Through you, Madam Speaker, we are being asked to consider a pilot for the keeping of backyard hens.
And you'd have to have inspectors that could go out and inspect hen houses if we approve that?
Through you, Madam Speaker, if a pilot is approved, we will set out the terms and conditions that are, that we feel are appropriate, and will take the necessary enforcement or inspection action depending upon the circumstances we encounter.
Chief Building official.
Ooh.
Same, similar questions. Do you have bylaws for hen houses?
The Building Code actually regulates accessory structures once the footprint area of the, the structure goes over 100 square feet.
So any hen house that we would want to do in the city, similar to Las Vegas and Amsterdam, you have bylaws for?
Yes.
Okay. As far as the noise bylaw, I guess it's back to Tracy Cook. How would you measure the noise that was from a hen house? To say it was different, difficult?
So through you, Madam Speaker, we are actually undertaking a review of the noise bylaw, and would have to consider how the keeping of backyard hens may or may not impact noise in communities.
So could, would you call this? Would you call that a noise that you could possibly deal with if a neighbor was complaining? Because it's not louder than the noise bylaw.
Through you, Madam Speaker, noise is subjective, and that's why we're undertaking the noise bylaw. One man's music is another man's nuisance. We would have to deal with the situations that arose as they arose.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Mehavik to speak. No, Counselor Mehavik held it, so he's the first speaker.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to put the motion on the, on the table. Basically, the request of, of my colleague councillors is to allow a pilot to go on in five words, cut words five, 13, 21, 32. Those are the words of Counselor Diciano, Counselor Doucette, myself, and Counselor, sorry, McMahon, for a period of up to three years with an interim review at 18 months. The participants of the program would have to register. There'd be a limit of four per, per property. It would not be allowed in apartment buildings, as they are in New York, by the way. Condominium buildings or properties without sufficient outdoor space, they would determine what that, the definition of that. The participants would have to agree to regular inspections. No roosters would be permitted. They would have to comply with all the applicable care of animals laws and bylaws, and they would remain the owner's property unless they went off property, in which case they obviously would be considered at large in the city, and they, the products of the, of the, of the hens would not be for, able to be offered for sale, and so they'd be for one's own personal use. Public health would also monitor this, along with the Toronto Food Policy Council, to make sure that everything is on the up and up, and I understand that there's another motion coming, adding additional boundaries, fences, protocols around this. Madam Speaker, I was around when the six municipalities, some of us were, and we had to combine our animal control bylaws. Some municipalities had allowed it, some didn't, and I remember though, that day because we were debating amongst ourselves, well, where should we put hens? And it really, it took all of about two seconds to say, "Ah, no, let's worry about that at another time." It wasn't a thoughtful, thoughtful position. We allowed pigeons, we allowed rabbits, we allowed guinea pigs, we allowed cats, we allowed dogs, but some people like hens. And there is no reason why when a resident comes from another country, another place, urban area, rural area, who comes to Toronto, when they are able to do it in their country or place of origin, should not be able to do and have those pets here in the city of Toronto. What's the context? Why, why am I so passionate about this particular issue? And it is serious. We have a very strong urban agricultural movement in the city of Toronto. That's why they're pounding on our doors for urban gardens. That's why they're pounding on our doors for food that is made, that is produced as close as possible to where it is consumed, that is healthy, that is, that, that where people know the origins of that food. That's really how to understand, that's one angle to understand what is happening here. So there's a, there are many folks that are supporting it, many very prominent organizations, including the Toronto Food Policy Council, the Toronto Urban Growers, those are the people doing our community gardens all over the place. They see a real positive benefit to this, to this possible program. People might not know, but we actually already endorsed doing this in the 2002 Grow TO, an urban agricultural action plan for the city of Toronto. One of its recommendations was to allow backyard hens to be kept in the city. Chickens are just one part of a healthy urban food system that can operate and provide food for residents in an affordable and ethical way. Now, some people say that this is, this is going to invite bad practice with hens, and I think my colleague, last council meeting, spoke of some of the things that might happen. Well, I ask you, is factory farming fair to any, any hen? Absolutely not. Those chickens never are allowed to stretch beyond a very, they just never stretch. That's how our eggs are produced today. That factory farming is cruelty to animals. Now, unless you are an absolute vegan, if you eat chicken, or if you eat eggs, then this is a much fairer and more humane way of raising, raising chickens. On the public health issue, a Vancouver public health study was done a few years ago, no problem was identified there. The trial period would be short, it's not in other people's ward. I say, give the movement a chance to do its work, to figure this out, and we'll come back with the, with a good report saying exactly what our experience was.
Thank you.
So please, folks, give this a chance. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Kerriganis has a motion. Clarification?
Yes, Madam Speaker, I was wondering if the councillor would think about also the allowing roosters in, in the mix?
No, no, you don't need, you don't need a rooster for the eggs, and frankly, I think the noise would be too much. The noise would be too much. The best practice is frankly just to allow the hens and not the rooster.
Have you seen the decibels of chickens and roosters, and if the noise is any different?
Clarification of the motion, Madam Speaker.
Clarification of the motion?
There is, there is a difference.
The motion, that Counselor Kerriganis, the motion is right there. Why don't you look at the motion and ask questions?
I did, and I've asked him if he would, if he has considering, says it's the noise. Therefore, the noise, my follow-up question is, has you checked anything about the noise?
Yes.
That's part of clarification.
No, that's not part of the motion. Like, the motion was just given to you.
You know what, I give up. I give up. I've asked him if you would consider, in the motion, if you would consider roosters.
And he said no.
And he said no, and because of the noise. And I've asked him if you heard anything about the noise, a follow-up question. Which part of that, am I out of line?
Yes, what I've heard is that, and I've heard broadly, and I've experienced personally in other urban areas where roosters are allowed, is that they are, they, they do wake you up in the morning. They can wake you up at sunrise.
Counselor, I'm going to allow you to listen to something, and I'm-
Okay, this, this is not clarification. Counselor Kerriganis?
To keep people in line.
Okay, I, I don't know, like, there's, the motion is right here. You need to ask questions on the motion. That's what questions are for. I'm sorry, but that's, those are the rules, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I also have a motion, if you can put that up. It's very similar to Counselor Mehavik's motion, and it's, it's, it's really not rocket science. I mean, the parameters of these two motions come from mostly municipalities that already allow backyard chickens. So we're talking rear yard setbacks, we're talking guidelines for enclosures, we're talking about a pilot project. Most importantly, on, on item number five, it's State City Council Direct, Executive Director, Municipal Licensing and Standards to include in the report back. This is what's so important, is that we have a pilot project, and we're going to ask that we report back to the Licensing and Standards Committee at the end of the pilot, details including complaints received, very legitimate, actions taken, another very legitimate thing we should track, staffing and resource impacts, and financial impacts. Madam Speaker, you know, it gets to me sometimes when most people in this room publicly would say that they are not, you know, supporters of the Donald Trump-style politics that we're seeing in the United States, but it's become very apparent with some of my colleagues here tonight, that fact and reason are out the window, and that the politics of fear is what they prefer to practice. And it becomes, it becomes very unfortunate, because almost every negative fact I've heard about backyard chickens is not true. The science doesn't support it, the facts don't support it. The hundreds and hundreds of people already have chickens in their backyards today. Their neighbors probably don't even know they have backyard chickens. I can tell you that from experience, my father's got backyard chickens. My children love it. It's, there's, there's never been a health issue with my dad's chickens. It's been over five years. By the way, they're all still laying eggs, over five years old. Another fact that, you know, while they, they lay eggs for two years and then we have them for 10, it's not true. They continue to lay eggs. And the reason why people aren't going to get rid of their chickens is because chickens, believe it or not, are social animals. People like chickens as pets. So, you know, the, the, the noise, let's look at the existing municipalities in Ontario that can tell us, there is no noise from chickens. They don't make noise. Look at, look at Niagara Falls, 500 dog complaints versus 10 chicken complaints last year for noise. I mean, we don't have to talk about, we don't have to bring fear out, let's just talk about the facts. There's enough municipalities in Ontario that, that allow backyard chickens, and it's not a problem. The reason why there isn't really the need for public consultation is because we already know how it works in all these other municipalities. And, you know, the argument that everybody's going to have chickens, and, you know, everybody's going to be ticked off, "Well, if everybody's got chickens, that means we're making the right decision, because everybody wants chickens." The fact is this, this is a hobby, okay? This is for people who are already intrigued and spend a lot of time in the outdoors and doing community gardens, and they're, and they're out there, and they want to, they want to bring their food closer to home. That's who's going to do this. It's not going to be the minute we, we approve this, there's going to be a rush to the farms out in, in country, in, in the countryside, and everybody's going to bring chickens back to Toronto. It's not going to happen. Let's just be realistic about this. There's people in Toronto, myself included, that want that experience, and it's, there's no health concerns whatsoever. So I'm asking you to please not let the politics of fear get before you today. Understand that, you know, if, if Toronto's going to be a great city, we're just going to follow so many other cities, big cities, that allow chickens in our community- to follow so many other cities, big cities, that allow chickens in our communities. And we're going to do it based on motions that are going to ask our MLS team to look at best practices in other municipalities and, and make it happen. So I hope everyone here will consider the pilot, and we can all learn from it. Thank you very much.
Councillor Grimes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm feeling a little cooped up. In order to get cracking with you, Jen, I'm going to call the question.
To speak?
The question's been called, recorded vote.
There are no... There are a number of speakers still on the list, members, so I urge you...
He can't get all my questions.
No, he...
No, he didn't speak. No.
No, he didn't. The question's been called.
He's getting cooped up, so we'd like to call the question.
The question's been called. There are a number of members of coun, there are a number of councillors that still want to speak. Recorded vote.
You can't do that, Frances. You're one of them.
No, I know. Yes, my name is there. I like, I want to speak.
The motion to call the question does not carry. The vote is 20 to 13. The required two-thirds majority has not been achieved.
Counselor Hart to speak?
Madam Speaker, I'll be very brief. I won't repeat all of the reasons that I feel that this is not a good idea, because everybody else has talked about it extensively. All I will say is, I've received emails from some residents in some of the wards in the pilot area, and one of the things I would make sure that councillors realise before they push their yes button on this, if that's what you're inclined to do, is that this item was not recommended, this pilot project was not recommended by staff. And because it was not recommended by staff, those people who would want to come and depute against it wouldn't realise that it would be on the floor of council. So the residents of these wards never had a chance to depute, thinking that it would be a pilot project. So I don't think that's really the way this council operates on matters like this. And I can tell you from my own experience, the list of prohibited animals is a list that took a lot of care in developing, a lot of community consultation along the way over a lot of years. And changing that list, I think, requires some community consultation. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you. Counselor Kerjanis to speak.
Madam Speaker, I do have a motion I'd like to put up, please. Following what the councillor said, I would like to have this sent back to the Licensing Standards Committee for further consideration, for people to come make deputations. I think it behooves us to make sure that we listen to our constituents. People have the right to be heard. So I would move this motion, please.
Thank you. So we do have a question.
Are you referring to something?
Counselor Mehevick, clarification?
No question, no question.
There's, there's no... Counselor Holliday, clarification of his motion?
Believe it or not, I, I want to clarify if, if Counselor Kerjanis is looking at referring just the item on the chickens back to the committee, or the entire item, including some of the other amendments?
Just the items about the chickens. Okay.
No, your motion says, unfortunately.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to stand it down and fix it?
Are you, are you, want to have a...
No. Counselor Kerjanis?
Madam Chair, I'll stand it down and fix it.
Yes. All right. Counsel? Okay. Jeez. Like, Counselor Kerjanis, you, you would like to withdraw your motion?
Would I be able to introduce just the chickens?
So, Counselor, unless...
Madam Chair, I would like to withdraw and submit just the chickens, if you would allow me to speak again.
But, but you, you can't, because you've already moved the motion, already spoken.
I'd love to speak.
No, but maybe somebody else could move it on your behalf. Yes, okay? Thank you. So Counselor Robinson, there's no motion? All right? So Counselor Dusset.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I won't be very long. I just want to remind people actually why we started this report. As you heard when I was asking questions, we started this report because several councillors were concerned how animals were being treated. I have a photograph here, which I was going to put up, but I'm not going to do that, because I find it very upsetting, this photograph I have. And I'm sure last year, the year before, many of us saw this kangaroo lying on a concrete floor, panting, no water in sight. That's what got some of us councillors saying, we have to protect these animals, they can't speak for themselves, but they are being removed from where they live, put in a vehicle, probably in a cage, put in a vehicle, and taken to a place they're unfamiliar with. And because it's usually short-term, they don't have the facilities there these animals need. So they don't have a nice, soft bed, they don't always have a bowl of food, and they don't always have water. My understanding is they don't feed them too much when they're away from home, because food goes through an animal, and they don't want to have to clear that up during the visit there, or through transportation. Too much information, I apologize. I'm trying to be very good here. So we felt that this was cruel behaviour. It actually doesn't matter what the animal is. We were looking at trying to protect these animals, we heard about a flamingo standing in a little bowl of water. We saw this kangaroo. We know of other animals taken away from their comfort zone. So that's really why we opened this up. However, I do support backyard chickens. I do not support roosters, because, believe me, I know from my experience growing up on an island with lots of farms around me, roosters crow at sunrise. It's not seven o'clock. It's not seven o'clock throughout the year, it's whenever that sun rises. And we don't want to bring that into a city, because that really, really, really will annoy people. You also heard me ask questions about beehives. Right now, the province allows residents to have a beehive on their property, but there's rules and regulations around that. There's, how close can it be to your neighbour's garden, you know, to the property line? You have to be registered. So the bees are protected. People love to have honey from their own bees. I think it's a great idea. But we are looking at hens, probably four hens, probably laying hens. Maybe you want to actually rent your hens, or maybe you actually rent, this sounds a bit strange, maybe you actually rent the egg, allow your children and your family to experience it hatching into chicks, grow the chicks to have the hens to lay the eggs. It's all amazing. When this came before licensing and standard in my first term, we had families come out, we had children come out, and tell us the experiences they were having, having these hens as pets in their garden. These children hug these hens. It is a pet. It's just, they live outside. We have pigeons, apparently we're allowed pigeons in our gardens. They live outside. The same sort of idea. So I do support this. Because this has been deferred from July, you probably don't have all the mail we've been receiving. We are at night item 161. And I guarantee you, the ones I read in July were in favour of backyard chickens. The ones we have here are in favour of backyard chickens. Residents are aware of what we are doing, and they have reached out and communicated to us. And they are in favour of this. The ones in my ward are in favour. We've also heard of other areas where these are allowed. Niagara Falls, Brampton, Guelph, Kingston, Victoria, Vancouver, Surrey. In the States, as an example, Chicago, New York, Los Angeles, Miami, Boston. It goes on and on and on. We are not the first to think of this. We are not going to reinvent the wheel. We are reaching out to these communities and saying, how did you get it to work? What are your pitfalls? How can we prevent that from happening here? This is a pilot project we're asking. We're not asking you all to accept backyard chickens in your wards yet. Let's do the pilot. Let's make sure it works. Let's make sure municipal licensing and standard gets their handle on how this is going to work.
Thank you, Counselor Dusset.
And I've run out of time. So please support the backyard hens.
Counselor Holliday?
Thank you, Speaker. I thought about this issue over the summer. A lot of information has come in about this. There's tons of resources online. But I think the answer was actually relatively simple. I thought about community council, and I thought about the typical York Community Council. And what I've learned in about three years of being a councillor is that a lot of my job has to do with conflict. Conflict between two neighbours, fighting over a hedge, fighting over a fence, maybe they're fighting over a barking dog, or some sort of an addition to a home. What concerns me about this is the potential conflict that arises out of us changing a law like this. Make no mistake about it, it's trying to be downplayed here, it's just sort of a fun hobby, it's, it's the introduction of livestock into the city for the purposes of farming. That's essentially what it is. We've got a bylaw in place that allows us to keep pets around. And, and pets are enough of a handful. You know this from your experiences in your ward. You've got clashes with dog owners, you've got dealings with dog parks. You've got enough conflict in a city that is constantly evolving into a more and more urban environment that is more and more dense. What happens is we crank up the pressure, the pressure goes back on the people, and these issues manifest, and they become something that a councillor has to deal with. I would urge you to think about this really, really carefully. As one of the other councillors mentioned, this is not a staff-initiated report. There isn't a human cry out of there to deal with chickens. It is something that has been introduced at a political level. And I want you to think very, very carefully about what the future is for this. Yes, it is a pilot project at this point in time, and it is contained. But should it become a larger item, you will now, along with trees, along with driveways, along with fence lines, along with noise bylaws, you will also be dealing with conflict between neighbours with respect to livestock and chickens at community council. And that's probably the first step, as we go from chickens to the next type of animal, where the arguments are exactly the same. Please think carefully about the path we're about to embark on. It is a very dynamic shift that could possibly happen today. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Holliday. Madam Speaker, you are next. Counselor Nunziata?
Yes, thank you very much. I know that there's a member of council will be moving a motion to refer Counselor Mehevick's motion back to licensing. It, it's really important that we refer it back and go through the public process that we should be doing. Whenever we pass a bylaw, and even if it's a pilot, we did that with the Bluer Street bicycle, bicycle lanes, we consulted first, before we did the pilot. Whenever we implement any new bylaws, and even if it's a, if it's a pilot, we consult with the community. On this particular item, we haven't consulted at all. There are no deputations from the community at all. I'm on licensing. Not once did we discuss pilot project for chickens. And not once did we discuss certain wards in the city that wanted the pilot. First of all, Counselor Dusset and Counselor De Chiano, and I can't remember the other wards, Mehevick, that want the pilot, that's fine, that's great. Let's have a, let's have a community consultation meetings in those wards, and hear from those residents if they support it or not. Now, my ward, the rail track, is the boundary for Counselor Dusset's ward and my ward. What happens if the chickens from her ward come over the tracks and come into my ward? And my residents don't want these chickens.
Why did the chicken cross the tracks?
Like, where, where is the boundary here? Are we going to have specific bylaws, permits, where people have to apply for permits if they're going to build, what are they called? Hen? Chicken coops?
Coops.
If they have to build a chicken coop, can they go up six feet, five feet, four feet? What is the bylaw? Do they have, do, do residents that apply for the permit, do they need to get a petition with all the residents on the street, the majority? If you get 51%, then you can have a chicken coop in your backyard? What are the rules? We can't just pass the bylaw without consultation and say, live with it, and in 18 months, we're going to report back. That's wrong. That's not what we do. And as far as enforcement, we can't enforce the dog bylaw, the dogs. How many complaints do you get of dogs in the parks, pooping in the park, and we can't enforce the bylaw? We get them all the time. We can't enforce the bylaw. Why are we passing new bylaws when we can't enforce it? It's wrong. And if, if the members of council that want them in their wards as a pilot, God bless you, consult with your residents. If you come back with 51% of the residents saying yes, by all means, I'll support you. But until then, I will not support the pilot.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Our next speaker is Counselor Perutza.
Maybe we should take that vote now?
Oh, Counselor Perutza, slow down. You may walk to your desk while we address the fact that it's almost eight o'clock. Madam Speaker, do you want me to take the vote on, I'm looking, I'm canvassing for a motion to complete the item?
Okay, we will now return to the item we were debating last night, LS 20.1. Okay, if I can please have some quiet in the council chambers? That's including staff as well? Counselor?
Thank you.
Okay, just one sec, Counselor Perutza.
De Chiano?
Yeah, I just wanted to hopefully ensure that Counselor Perutza's request to speak sticks to the facts on how chickens, how chickens...
Counselor De Chiano, that's not a point of order, please.
Let him just stick to the facts.
Okay, Counselor Cressy, can, can I please have some quiet? Okay, Counselor Perutza, go ahead.
Thank you, Speaker. Speaker, I have nothing but respect for Counselor De Chiano, so I'm good with, with sticking to the, sticking to the facts as they were. I'm not going to be supporting, I'm not going to be supporting the pilot to basically allow people, those who aren't already doing so... people, those who aren't already doing so, allow people to basically build a chicken coop in their backyards and maintain chickens. And I'll tell you why I'm not going to do that, Speaker. And actually, as I think about the issue, there's a kind of irony in it that is absolutely dumbfounding. I remember as a young man when I-
Counselor Perutza, hold on, I'm going to put your time on hold. I didn't even turn your time on, actually. You know, it's very noisy in here. The members of council need a break?
I don't mind, Speaker, I don't mind.
No, no, but there's far too much noise.
But I'm loud enough to hear myself, so I'm good with that, no worries.
Counselor Mamalidi, DeChiano, Grimes?
I'm just having the chicken talk.
Yes, but can you sit down, please? Okay, Counselor Perutza, okay, go ahead.
Yes, Speaker, there's a kind of irony to this. I remember as a young person immigrating to Canada, and I remember when my father and my uncle, because we tenanted with my uncle in his home, when they went into the backyard to till the soil to plant some tomatoes and some basil and some beans. And I remember the stiff upper lips on the street that curled up and the nostrils that flared and said, you know, those folks that said, we don't do that here. We don't till the backyard and plant a garden. And that was very much a sort of a working-class thing back in the day, and now that's very common. But it's the same people that, with that stiff upper lip and those nostrils that were flaring back then, that middle-class of folks that now today is saying, please, allow us to have chickens in our backyard. Let us build a coop and grow our omega-powered eggs so that we can have these yummy eggs in the morning. But there's a kind of middle-class naivety associated with that position that is absolutely, that is engaging for me. It just kind of like, it brings it all home. Chickens need work, lots and lots of work. They need to be fed and cared for each and every day, two, three times a day. They need to be cleaned. Yeah, they need to really be taken care of. And chickens don't produce the kind of eggs that people are talking about. There are a number of months, because I remember as a young man, Counselor Mary Margaret McMahon yesterday said to me, but you're Italian, you should like the notion of being able to raise your own chickens in the backyard. I remember that experience in Italy. I was old enough to remember that chickens and people had chickens in our hometown next to their homes and the rest of it. And I'll tell you why they're not permitted today, because when I go back, the chickens aren't there anymore. Because chickens are dirty. They require a lot of work. They eat all day and drop feces everywhere, and that feces powders up, and that powder in dry climates basically goes airborne. They generate a whole bunch of flies, big, fat, black flies that love chicken coops, that love chicken areas, absolutely. The ones that don't get eaten then fly around, and what they do is they'll fly over and land on the hot dogs and hamburgers that the neighbor has on the grill or taken off the grill. Yes, they do! Yes, they do, Speaker. That's exactly what those big, black flies will do. Now, I understand that Counselor DeChiano has probably ample space in his backyard, a big home, can do that coop, and will spend hundreds of dollars on very nutritious food that will power that omega in those eggs, so that when he has that egg, it just, whoo, he's like raring to go. I get that, and he will be conscientious at that. And yes, there will be some other people who will do likewise, and yes, there'll be some other people who will look at that and say, how do I, you know, do this as a business? And the rest of it, in basically being able to produce lots and lots of eggs. But in working-class neighborhoods, chicken coop after chicken coop after chicken coop, they're smelly. One of the biggest bylaw issues that we have that drives absolutely people crazy is things that attract rodents into a neighborhood, mice and rats, and these will, because that's what they do. You know, people who let their dogs run rampant in their backyard and drop feces everywhere and don't pick up after them, it drives people absolutely nuts. So while a few people will take up the call to have a chicken that will lay an egg for a few months, and now, you know, July and August, they stop laying eggs until about Christmas time, and then they start laying eggs slowly again until, you know, springtime, March and so on. They don't lay eggs all the time, every couple of days when they're laying eggs. But when they're not laying eggs, they give you zero eggs. So, yes, and what this will do is will drive people crazy. While a few people do it, the great majority will not, and they'll be on the phone to you saying, how could you possibly permit that dust storm next door that is so smelly and that I'm eating with my barbecue and my hot dogs every other weekend, Speaker? So that's why I'm not supporting the-
Jeez, Madam Speaker, following a chicken experts, a lot of work today, very demanding. I do have a motion. It is to refer Counselor Mehavik's motion and Counselor DeChiano's motion to the Executive Director Licensing Standards with a quest that the Executive Director of Miss Licensing Standards hold public consultations on the pilot to permit backyard hens as proposed in these motions and report it back to Licensing Standards Committee on the results of that. So, in doing that, there's, seriously, there's a, sorry, I don't know if the "oo" is about the motion or about the chickens. But when I was speaking offline with Tracy Cook and asked, do we hear about this at all from people? Are there complaints? And the answer was yes. In fact, of about 125 annual complaints regarding prohibited animals, close to 100 of them were for chickens that aren't even permitted now. So, if we're getting that type of complaint, it comes back to the issue that was spoken about earlier. We, as a council, are open to public consultation. We like to hear from people as to what they think. We do that quite substantially on development applications. We do that on parks improvements, even little playgrounds. We go out to talk to people. Or on dog parks. We do that regarding traffic. We do that on difficult items like taxis and Uber, and we're consulting now on what we're going to do on other areas. That's what we do. We go out and we ask the people that we represent, what do you think? And we allow them an opportunity to come forward and tell us that. And we haven't done that in this case. I know my colleagues have gone and run and said, well, support this, let me do a trial project. But I look at it and compare it to some of the backyards that we have that may be 15 feet wide, 20 feet wide, house after house in the areas where they're smaller, and they're not that long. And can you imagine, and I'm trying to imagine, if my neighbor had chickens running around next door? And yesterday I was playing a little tape of chickens clucking, but with that noise, I mean, there's enough noise that we hear sometimes, whether it's construction, because if it's 6:45 in the morning, the phones ring in the councillor's office, why are you letting them construct before 7 o'clock? Don't you have bylaws? Why are you letting them do this noise on the weekends? It's not like chickens are silent and smell great. It's that they could be an imposition. And it's not the same as when I hear, well, have fresh food closer to home, tomatoes, cucumbers, beans, peppers. No impact on the neighbors. You can do an awful lot with that. But having an animal that is normally on a farm come into your home because some people that came here, as my colleague Counselor DeChiano said, from other countries would like to do that here, may find that it doesn't work here. However, if it's what the community in general wants, I'm more than willing to look at that and have a test. But in this case, I don't see it. So, in all seriousness, and trying to work collegially with my colleagues, I'm not saying no, and I'm not saying yes. I'm saying, let's have the respect for the residents of Toronto and ask them first what they think before we tell them what we think they think and make these decisions for them, because it could have a serious impact on some of them, or it could be something they think is fantastic. But let's give them a chance to tell us their opinion first and not make up our minds for them, and not do it through a bylaw for a year and a half or two years that lets it go in certain areas when, again, we even haven't even asked them. That's why I've moved the motion, and that's why I think it's a reasonable compromise to it now, and it's up to you, as my colleagues, to decide what you want to do.
Okay, thank you. We do have some questions for you. Clarification of the motion, Counselor Carroll?
Yes, just a quick question about the motion, because I think the biggest challenge here is to allay any misunderstanding, and I heard you describe, you know, a chicken in my next-door neighbor's backyard. And one of the hurdles here is there won't be, according to this proposal, any chickens in backyards in Willowdale, and this isn't an in-general proposal. So I'm wondering if you would consider it a friendly amendment, if we could be specific in this, that because we want the pilot to only happen in four wards, could the consultation be in those four wards so as not to confuse residents in other parts of the city that don't have to worry about this for another three years?
Mine is to do a public consultation, because even if you do it in those three or four wards, you don't know what other people may want. And what you may find is that the local councillor, if it's something that people in his community really want in those four wards, they'll bring their people out, and they'll say they want it. And other wards may say no, or other wards may say yes. I don't want to go through multiple public consultations. I think we should find out what it is, and of course, the local councillors will try to bring out their constituents to say that they want it, and I'd love to hear from them, and maybe we'll recommend it. But I don't think we should only consult in just those four wards when we're looking at a change to allow something. I think those wards should definitely be included, but I don't see any reason to not allow residents of Scarborough, North Yerkes, Toowoa, and Toronto to come out, because they may like it, they may want it, and their areas do.
So I need further clarification now, Madam Speaker, because the proposal now is just to conduct the pilot in the four wards where councillors want them. So my question is, are you having a consultation despite the potential that in fact, what is a contained pilot right now, the consultation might require the necessity of broadening it and increasing the cost of conducting the pilot? Are you saying that if it came back, six wards now wanted, eight wards now wanted, that that result of the consultation would be fine with you, or do you want to continue to contain it to four wards?
I thought I was clear. I think public consultations are public consultations. I think if you're going to ask people what they think, those people in the areas that I represent, that you represent, that my colleagues from Scarborough or downtown represent should be welcome to come to those consultations. I think that this recommendation then will come from committee to council, and council will make a decision at the end.
I think I have the information I need, Madam Speaker.
Counselor DeChiano, clarification of motion?
Friendly questions, right, Justin?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Counselor Shiner, are you aware that MLS, over the past year, in fact, conducted an online survey asking people about animals on the prohibited list? Are you aware of that?
Well, I guess because I have it, most of my ward wasn't aware of it either, or I would have looked for the chicken part of it and been able to comment on it.
Are you, okay, well, let's try and answer the question. Are you aware that 2,400 people were asked online by MLS about the prohibited animals list? And are you aware what the percentage of people that wanted chickens taken off the prohibited animals list? Are you aware of that percentage?
Counselor, I'm not aware of any nature.
Are you aware that 54%? Would you be surprised?
I can answer you all together.
Counselor DeChiano, please allow the councillor to answer the question and stop interrupting.
I'm not aware of the survey. I'm not aware of whom was called, what the questions were, or what the responses were. What I do know is I didn't receive any calls to my office about these surveys, so I would suggest that most people in my community probably didn't hear about them. But if you're going to ask me about what the survey might have been, I can't answer you any questions or be surprised about anything, because I don't know anything about the survey.
So you didn't know that 54% of people surveyed by MLS actually wanted chickens taken off the prohibited list?
As I said to you, you're asking me questions to put numbers in front of me based on what the survey said. I've been there as well, Justin. I told you, I don't know anything about the survey.
Right. Okay.
Counselor DeChiano?
I've got more questions, Madam Speaker. That is clarification of the motion. We're talking about a deferral, and I'm asking exactly with respect to the deferral, because it's asking for consultation, and I'm asking it to councillors to hear.
Counselor DeChiano, you're not speaking to Counselor DeBairmaaker, you're up asking questions on clarification of the motion.
Given the misinformation on this issue, you know, we had Counselor Perutza talk about the fact that chicken coops need to be heated, which is not true. So given the misinformation that goes on with how you manage and take care of chickens, don't you think that the public consultation process that is within the motions contained here is best that we hear from the people who are either dealing with chickens as opposed to those across the city that are just going to continue on talking about the misinformation? Wouldn't you rather have a public consultation process with a public that's better informed? And this is why the motions that we put forward say that we should have this consultation 18 months and at the end of the pilot? Don't you think that would be more effective?
Well, in clarification of my motion, no. Or I wouldn't have put it here, because now you're saying that someone should have chickens next door to them and after they're allowed there because council allowed it, then you should consult them. I think you can inform people through public consultations, the same as you're asking for, describe what the needs are and get their perspective on it through the division, which is what I'm suggesting, not that each of us go out and have chicken meetings of some type, or, I'm saying, I think that you can go out, you can describe what it is, you can talk about it, and you can get input, and I think that's what we're known for at council, and that's what I'm suggesting. Ask input before you do it.
Thank you. No, thank you. Counselor Kergianis, clarification of the motion, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, it looks like we're having a chicken summit. Through you to my colleague, Counselor Shiner, do you feel it's important that consultations happen and we don't do things on the fly on the floor of council?
I appreciate the opportunity to expound upon my motion, but that's not really the clarification. That's what the motion says, Counselor.
A clarification of the motion?
It does say that, and I think I said it in my words.
In your long history in council, have you seen another item that has gone without?
I know it isn't. Counselor Kergianis, clarification, and please, Counselor Campbell, stop interrupting. I'd appreciate it. Counselor Kergianis, clarification of the motion.
Yes, Madam Speaker, if you'll allow me to finish, and if my colleague over there is patient and not pinching niddles, maybe he'll let me finish. My question is-
That clock's right there, clock's wrong?
Yeah, that's right there.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor, you're asking for consultations. Have you, in your long history, seen another motion come through without any public consultations? And is this why you're asking for public consultations?
Counselor Kergianis, we've done a whole bunch of stuff without consultations, and that's really why I want them, because I think in an area like this, we should have them first.
Why do you think it's important in this area that we have public consultations?
Now, you're just allowing me to chase the dream of adding on to my speech, but I said it earlier. I think that, and I appreciate that, but I'm not going to abuse it, I respect all of my colleagues. I really think it's important to put the issue out, because it wasn't out in any of the work that we did over the bylaw. We didn't put it out at our committee meetings. We didn't ask people to talk about it. We simply looked to amend something here. I don't think that's fair to residents of the city. I think if you're going to make a change like that, even on a trial basis, you should let them know that when it's at the committee. And in fairness, my colleagues could have brought that up at committee. They could have brought it up at the licensing committee. They could have suggested it there. Nobody suggested it at the licensing committee. So I feel that my motion is completely fair and reasonable, because if you didn't tell people about it there and it was somewhat secretive and your thought was to do it, why are you doing it here? We always say, do these things at committee, and that's all that I'm- We always say, do these things at committee, and that's all that I'm saying here. Put the question of chickens in backyards, public consultation at the committee, and then to council, not to council without the ability for people to speak to it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Holland to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I have a motion as well, which is very similar to Counselor Shiner's. It's not, it's the same? Okay, so it was the same, but actually, I'm going to just say a few things about that then. I'm going to be supporting Counselor De Bearmakers, and I believe that most of council has come to its senses, and that this item should just be killed right here on the floor of council. So it should not go back to committee. So if you're not supporting it to go back to committee, then don't vote for Counselor Shiner's, and in fact, just vote against the entire pilot here on the floor of council. So I haven't, I don't remember, first of all, the last time that a pilot was moved on a floor of council, a pilot. And we all know how pilots go in the City of Toronto, they all roll out, because nobody wants to admit they were wrong. That's government for you. So we don't, we aren't going to stand up, you're not going to get a politician to stand up and say, yep, that didn't work. We used your taxpayer dollars, we rolled out a pilot, and guess what? We got a whole slew of problems, and it doesn't work. So you're not going to see that. The cost of the pilot is not even before us. How many MLS complaints do you get in your ward? I certainly may have a few about chickens, but I got a slew of complaints on other issues. I know Tracy Cook, and I know our MLS staff out in Scarborough running their behinds off, trying to address those complaints, let alone trying to address complaints on chickens. I can talk to the cows come home, let alone chickens, about the issues that we have to deal with before council, on transit, gridlock, we've got the downtown relief line that's completely unfunded. We've got major, major issues. And in an election year, on the final year of the term of council, we're talking about chickens. This morning, I wake up, shouldn't be beside my bed, but it is, and I roll over, first thing I do is obviously look at my phone. I've got two complaints from my residents asking, why are you talking about chickens? It is absolutely insane. Insane! We have to come to our senses, and I'm going to tell you, I come from farm country. That's Chatham, born and raised, my mom's on a farm. Where am I going this weekend for Thanksgiving? To the farm. And guess what? It's crops. They don't have small flocks, because guess why? It's expensive. They don't have backyard chickens, they have horses that they've taken as rescue from the declining race industry, but they don't have backyard chickens for a whole slew of reasons that we've mentioned already here today. That's in farm country. If you go to Calladen, I've got tons of friends all over the countryside around, outside of Toronto, and they don't have backyard chickens. Why? Cost. This is a hobbyist issue. People that can afford it, like Counselor De Chiano's parents, they are doing chickens, they may do them in their backyards, they may have them. But you're not having the average, low-end person have chickens because they want to feed their family. It costs $40 a dozen, people. $40 a dozen. That's what it costs to run chickens in your backyard. So please tell me why you would ever vote for a pilot and cost more money from the City of Toronto, from MLS, on a pilot, which we don't even have numbers before us. Who would even move this motion? I can't, I just can't even believe it. So I'm going to say, vote down Counselor Shiner's motion, kill this right here, and let's get to serious business for the City of Toronto and the residents. This is ridiculous.
Counselor Carroll to speak.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rose to ask questions about the idea of consulting across the city, because I am concerned that, that part of the confusion right now is that everyone thinks we're talking about the whole city. This is a pilot project in which four local councillors have enough interest in their ward that they are willing to undergo this pilot. To be the councillor who agrees to host a pilot is extra work. It's a lot of extra work. So I'm grateful to the four councillors that actually want to do that extra work. And it means that if I support this pilot today, I don't have to talk about this, except for when the report comes back and when the pilot is done, and then, only then, would we make a citywide decision. Then, only then, would I need to be talking to everyone, including those people who live in my ward. Because four other councillors want to do this. There is a three-year pilot going on right now. Counselor Holland, who spoke just before me, is one of the hosts, and Counselor DiGiorgio, who will speak immediately after me, is the third host. The participatory budgeting pilot is going on in three wards right now, and it is a ton of work, a ton of work for our staff. But we're doing it because you want to find out if something that is labor-intensive, something that does have to engage staff, in this case, the PB pilot, is engaging a person out of the city manager's office, but you want to find out in some contained and controlled way whether or not it's worth expanding that work across the city. You want to know before you're cutting the big check whether or not there's truly benefit to the city. A few wanted to do this, a few all over town were emailing in, whether, while I was Chair of Budget, and on and on. To this day, people who don't know about the pilot from all of your wards, send me tweets, because they know what I know about PB, they go, hey councillor, did you know this was going on in Seattle? Did you know this was going on in this city, in that city, in that city? Chickens is no different. The minute Counselor Mahavik began to talk about this years ago, because other cities were doing it, he began to be the repository, so to speak. Torontonians who are interested in doing this reach out and say, hey, did you know they're now doing it in this major city? Did you know they're now doing it in that major city? We don't know what that means to Toronto. We are a different terrain. We do have, we do have raccoons, as many people have mentioned today. We have, we have some unique qualities that mean we need to test this. And for 44 councillors, you're very, very lucky, because there are four actual councillors who have agreed that they would test it, so that you don't have to. But there are enough Torontonians that want this to be allowed, that it really does behoove us to try it somewhere where there is a willing partner to this pilot. Why would you not have them try it? File it under "forget" in your own area. File it under "forget" until the interim report comes back, because you really can. But in those wards, if this consultation motion had said, let's consult in those wards, I'd have been for it. In those wards that are willing to have the pilot, we're going to get the information we need to lay this issue to rest once and for all. But during that time, why would you hold this back and have a citywide consultation that simply, simply confuses the issue? And to use another animal reference, puts the cat among the pigeons in places it doesn't need to be. I'm grateful to these four partners. Go your best lick, I will support your pilot, and I will, I will be happily unaware until the report comes back. Thank you to those four councillors.
Counselor DiGiorgio.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I will also be supporting the pilot projects in the four wards, and I want to echo the comments of the previous speaker. In my view, Madam Chair, the primary reason we should entertain going through the pilots is because the zoning bylaw permits hobbies. And I can tell you that I've experienced hobbies over the last 20, 25 years that set up, or that residential people are allowed to, to do. I ran into the pigeon problem over 20 years ago, where people were keeping pigeons in their backyard, but we made, we made regulations that said at the time, this is in the mid-'90s and early-'90s, that only people who had the hobby of keeping racing pigeons in their backyard, and we put in controls on the number of racing pigeons they could permit in their backyard. I was not in favor of pigeons, but notwithstanding that, we were able to look at the zoning bylaw that permitted them and put in additional regulations to try and control. So, one of the primary benefits of going through a pilot is to try and come up with regulations that allow us to control the extent or the number of chickens that people can keep as a hobby in your rear yard. And yes, you're probably right, it'll be those properties that have large properties that are able to take advantage of that. Let me also say, and forget about the myth that there might be a possibility that more and more wards would allow this to happen, because I can tell you that one of the things that, you're one of the people in the wards that the majority of people don't want chickens, you can always say, look, by the way, if you really want to keep chickens in your backyard, I can refer you to four wards where they're permitted, and maybe you might want to move to those wards. Okay? So I wouldn't worry too much about the pilots being expanded to cover all the wards in the City of Toronto. I think, Madam Chair, I, you know, the latest, the latest hobby that I'm privy to in my ward is that people use their garages to do obnoxious uses, like, for example, paint cars. And they, they basically run a business, but the reality is, they can say, look, this is a hobby, I work on only a select number of cars, primarily for personal use. I've got somebody in a garage that produces meat, that says, hey, we only consume it within our own family. Reality is, they're producing sausages and what have you, and they're actually selling them. So, again, the purpose is to come up with, and I've been after Tracy Cook for, for years, we have to put in controls that if uses are permitted, we need to sort of try and control them, because otherwise, if you don't go through the, if you don't go through the pilot project, the reality is that people will just put chickens in their backyard because it's a permitted hobby. And you're going to, you're going to basically expend a lot of resources to try and deal with uses that are theoretically legal under the zoning bylaw.
Counselor Robinson to speak.
Yes, thank you, Speaker. I want to draw council's attention to page 11 of this staff report, and if you don't have it in front of you, I'll share with you what the staff report states. It says they don't recommend this, period, for three reasons. The first is public health and safety. The second reason they've stated in the report very clearly for council to read is public nuisance, impact on neighborhoods. And the third reason is animal welfare. I'm going to repeat those. Staff are not recommending this for these three reasons: public health and safety, public nuisance, and animal welfare. It says it all, period. We should not be entertaining this for a second. What I found, what I found out when I did research on this is that's the most complained about animal on Toronto's prohibited animal list, for smell and noise, attracting raccoons and rodents. Hens lay eggs for only two to five years, and then what happens? They're abandoned, or they're inhumanely slaughtered in backyards. And then what happens with the remnants? I got emails about that this morning. The shelters are overloaded, staff are overloaded with unwanted chickens. There is accidental rooster acquisition at young age, at a young age, and again, those roosters go to shelters, they're abandoned or killed. There is a lack of financial, Counselor Holland talked about this, a lack of financial and information resources. People do not know enough about raising chickens properly, resulting in mistreatment and abandonment. I don't know if you knew this, but they're very susceptible to frostbite. There's many technicalities around this issue. Humane Society recommends that we leave it to the professionals who have the proper training, knowledge, and experience in chicken care. So I hope that council will not support this for the chickens. I don't think this is appropriate, I'm a fan of, I'm a fan of urban agriculture, but I'm not a fan of this idea, and I would like to say this, that this term of council, we've been saying yes to every pet project, no pun intended, we say yes to everything, and we continue to put strain and strain on our staff teams and stretch their staff resources. It's a major problem, and we continue to say, yes, 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 and let's spend more, and let's spend more. Well, staff have had it, and they've said no to this for three really good reasons, really important reasons that we need to listen to as a council. And they don't have the resources to get out to these neighborhoods to address these issues. I think last year, there was over 100 chicken calls, and staff had to get out there to address them. So let's not put any more stress on our staff team who are trying to deal with, with issues, important issues across our city, the issues we're already facing, and let's not support what's before us with this motion.
Thank you. Counselor Mamalidi to speak.
Madam Speaker, what the flock is going on at City Hall? I, for one, stand up and ask the question, because I just cannot believe what I'm hearing and seeing at City Hall this term of office. I cannot believe that we're not talking about more substantial issues. My parks are a mess. My roads are a mess. I have weeds growing out of our yin yang in Ward 7. I can't get staff out to do anything. But here, we like to squawk. We like to squawk like the chickens that we're talking about. And I, for one, am going to fly the coop on this vote. I'm going to fly the coop in protest, because this place is getting absolutely ridiculous. It's getting to a point where we don't want to deal with the more important and substantial issues, because we're too afraid to deal with them. We're spending more money regularly at City Hall, we're doing what we shouldn't be doing right now. What we should be doing is saying, how do we cut? How do we deal with our overgrowing budget? How do we deal with the fact that we're spending another billion dollars more than we did last term of office? To do what? To bring out a few more inspectors to three or four wards that want the damn chickens. My ward doesn't want the chickens. My ward doesn't want our bylaw enforcement officers going to three or four different wards for chicken calls. At the end of the day, where are our priorities? What the flock is going on at City Hall?
Counselor Mamalidi, thank you. I hope you stay for the vote. After that wonderful speech, you should show your constituents that you're voting.
And you shouldn't even allow this on the floor!
Counselor Burnside.
Moment of silence, get the tension up. Madam Speaker, this is ridiculous. It's government at its worst. I'm going to do this in 30 seconds, I guess 16 more. We haven't defined the number of participants, we haven't defined the, the actual fees that might be involved, we don't know how many MLS staff we need. Are you crazy? This is why people laugh at council. We make decisions when we don't even have the information. Give your heads a shake.
Thank you. Okay, Counselor Palacio.
Thank you, Speaker. Back in July, I did speak in favor of this pilot. By then, I believed that there was no harm to allow the pilot to proceed, as long as city staff, they monitor what was happening out there, and they will come back with a report to the, to the committee. So the key there was to monitor. I know that some members of council who are requesting the pilot, they're very thoughtful, they're well-intentioned, and mainly Counselor De Chiano, who has taken the time to go around and to talk to members of council and to share his experience and his interest on it. I know he's passionate about it, and I commend him for that. Now, I'm getting a number of calls from my own ward that they want... Now, I'm getting a number of calls from my own ward that they want my ward to be added on to the pilot list. And yesterday, members of council, we heard from city staff during the question period about some of the concerns. And we were told about specifically on chapter 349 that prohibits all domestic birds like chickens, turkeys, pigeons, flamingos, cranes, and penguins. And I think that's part of the discussion that we had in the past. Now, as a result of that, it's very clear that there is no criteria in place, there is no guidelines in place for MLS to monitor anything at this point. So how can we ask city staff to go and monitor something without giving the tools first? And we all know that any pilots, at the end, very often become permanent programs. Some members of council, like Counselor Holland, Counselor Robinson, they have spoken about the negatives and whatever else in terms of, of the pigeons, the chickens. I'm going to concentrate on something more essential, more important, that we should be more concerned about that. And actually, the speaker, Counselor Nusia, yesterday asked a very valid question to city staff in terms of community consultation. So friends, we are talking about the process, the real process. I'm not going to be guided by fear mongering. I never had and I never will. The bottom line is that city staff, they are not recommending anything about this, what's being asked from them in the report. And I do value and respect the professional opinion and advice. Therefore, I am concerned with some aspects as we move forward in terms of that it to be totally wrong to proceed without community consultation. The public has not been, we haven't given them a public notice. They haven't been consulted. Residents have the right to be informed, they have the right to be consulted, and they have the right to be heard. And it is our obligation as elected officials, my friends, to ensure that transparency, accountability, and openness, and fairness more than anything else, is part of that process. When I talk about fairness, I'm talking also about the silent majority out there. They haven't been consulted at all. People have to be part of the decision-making. It's wrong just simply to move motions on a flying, on the floor of council, as we did during the taxi industry review, that ended us, ended the city, ended this council in court, and we lost.
That's right.
We have to go back to the committee. I'm not afraid, as Chair of the committee, to engage with 500, 1,000 people who want to depute. That's democracy. And I'm asking you to support the deferral from Counselor Shiners. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, members of council, motion five. recorded vote. Please, we're in the middle of a vote.
Motion five does not carry. The vote is 13 to 24.
Okay, motion three.
Motion one.
Pardon? Sorry, motion one.
Deputy Mayor Minawang, please.
Motion one carries 23 to 14.
Madam Speaker, we have to restart the vote.
Okay?
Deputy Mayor Minawang, please.
Motion three carries 29 to 8.
Item is amended.
Counselor Lyden, thank you. Counselor Bala, please. Counselor Kerjianis, Counselor Carroll.
Item is amended, carries 25 to 12.